Okay, we'd like to call to order the Town of Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission, March 24, 2025 meeting. Ms. Bergami, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Ms. Strain.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Ms. Belofsky.
Here.
Ms. Gomes.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Mr. Millsap.
Here.
Mr. Billen Calhoun.
Here.
Chairman Darpino.
Here. Next item up is approval of the minutes. We don't have any current minutes to review and approve at this meeting. The planning department is diligently working on getting caught up with the meeting minutes. So if you do have any questions, please reach out to myself or to Ms. Robertson. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right on to privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is open to any resident of Niskiuna that would like to speak about any planning or zoning matter. Please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. Okay, it looks like no one present is here for privilege of the floor. Laura, do we have any correspondence?
Yeah, we have no correspondence and no one online.
Okay. So last time for privilege of the floor. All right, seeing none, we are going to close privilege of the floor and move on to, excuse me, unfinished business. We have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. First up is a resolution. Resolution 2025-09 for site plan approval for a tenant change with signage to Dave's Hot Chicken at 412 Balltown Road, Suite D. Now therefore, be it hereby resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission has determined that the following proposed waivers, as described below, are acceptable for this building and would have a minimum negative effect on the aesthetics of the plaza. One, a 6.5 square foot facade sign waiver for both the west and east Dave's Hot Chicken facade signs, two signage waivers total. Number two, a waiver for bright red awnings on the south facade only, one facade awning waiver total. Three, a waiver for high intensity color graphics on the ephesus of the west, south, and east facades of Dave's Hot Chicken, portion of the building, three facade color waivers total. And be it further resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant said signage and facade color waivers as described in the above resolution with the following conditions. Condition one, no neon colors will be used in the facade artwork. Two, facade artwork will be only on the ephesus only. No artwork is approved on the bottom bricks of the south side. Three, the awnings in the west and east side of the building will remain the existing green color to match the adjacent businesses. Make it a motion.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mr. Khan, second?
Second.
Okay, second by Ms. Gomes. Do we have a representative from the applicant here?
Hello, thanks for having me back again.
Thank you.
I did bring a pantone chart to show you the actual pantone of the Dave's bread, just so you can see it in person, if it's okay if I pass that around.
I can give it to Ms. Robertson? Thank you. So what we're going to do is we have three conditions here. What I wanted to do is we wanted to have the discussion portion for each of those three items.
Okay.
With the entire board, get the feedback on that, and then see if the resolution moves forward as proposed or if it needs to be amended.
Sure, sounds good.
Okay.
Chairman Rogers, the three waivers that we're discussing, right? Yeah, the conditions stand there. Okay, so as Chairman Diarpino stated, for my fellow members of the board, we're going to take each of these one at a time. And if we need to amend something, we'll formally amend it as per our procedure. And so based on the narrative that everyone has in the documentation of all the meetings, et cetera, took place and prior meetings, my recommendation on resolution item one, 6.5 square foot facade sign waiver on the west and east sides, which is a two signage waiver total, I would recommend that the board grant that waiver. If folks have any points or comments of discussion.
I'm fine with it, neither seems excessive.
I just wanted to say I'm also in favor of it. I think it's a very negligible size impact to both sides. We did see renderings of both sizes with the previous one. It's hard to discern between the two, in my opinion.
Okay.
All right. So that remains unchanged?
Right.
All right. Moving to number two?
Number two.
Okay. This is for the waiver for the bright red awnings on the south facade only. And if you could pull up that image, thank you. Go ahead.
So on this one, I'm going to recommend that the board does not grant this waiver to maintain the consistency of the entire block of this building, in addition to the building that's across the street coming out of the page in the photograph, which also has those green awnings that's there. And the code was cited in our narrative about consistency of the plaza. And so my recommendation is, we'll vote on it, right? But my recommendation is to the board that we do not grant that waiver. And we maintain that the awnings stay, the original green colors are there.
And just remind me, if we granted it and they were permitted red for Dave's Hot Chicken, does that open it up to the fact that then a future tenant would have the freedom to change them again? Or does it stay strictly with this particular tenant and it would go back to green?
So legal counsel can speak up here, but...
Yeah, so this isn't a variance, it's a waiver. So I think that they could keep the red, but they wouldn't be able to switch it to a different color in the future. So I guess the choices going forward would be red or green.
Okay, right. Thank you. And my concern has always been, first of all, number one, the code about, the code statements in the narrative about consistency with the plaza, the contiguous buildings, the continuous awnings on this building. But the second thing is, we would be setting a precedent with this one, right? So it'll be a precedent.
We have heard from the applicant that they may not move forward without the awnings, just as a point of clarification, yeah.
Right, and so it comes down to a true as possible interpretation and maintenance of our code versus the corporate requirements of the client. And we've had that, you know, we've had those, let me call them, you know, conflicting criteria before, we've always managed to reset resolution. But as of today, we've brought this to, you know, a resolution vote by the board, which is a proper, hopefully timely enough, you know, outcome, so. Everything I've said in the past, I've said, there's really nothing I can repeat here that's not been documented somewhere else.
Well, especially since we would be limiting it to the south facade, I don't have a problem with the red awning. It's not as bright as originally, or at least as I originally thought it was going to be.
I know that Lowe's is a standalone building, but it is pretty similar to the red. I know it's not super comparable, but it looks a lot better in person than it does on a screen.
So I wanted to echo Mr. Khan's statement. I think as we've talked, you know, I'm not supportive of the red awnings. The consistency of the plaza, you know, there's other buildings that have them, several others that have the dark green awnings. You know, there is the opportunity that those large storefront glasses can be rendered in colors. I believe the T-Mobile station is almost entirely pink. So there's definitely opportunities there for the red. And if there's ever any usage of the parking lot in the future, whether that's tables, umbrellas, other things like that, you know, the red logo, I think, can have a presence elsewhere on the building that's not going to be regulated by the board.
Sure.
Yeah. And also because of, I know that the corporate rebranding is a big thing that you had, but there were a lot of, a lot of different images in different places where Dave's Hot Chicken has assimilated into, you know, other corporate areas. And I think that, you know, the direction with the signs and some of the, maybe the window graphics, there's an opportunity for that.
Sure.
Translation, we really love Dave's Hot Chicken, but we will be removing the red awnings from the resolution. Correct?
Well, I'd like to get feedback from other board members too as well, just as we're still in discussion before we vote on it.
Personally, I want to hear about three from you, because I feel like the third option kind of flows with the second one for me.
Okay. All right. Point of order, can we discuss number three before? So relative to number three, and I've maintained before, in looking at the plaza and the precedences that were set, the, I've, I consider the murals an extension of paint. Chairman Diarpino and the planning board, they confirm that those are the EIFs structures, which means that it is paintable again in the future if a new tenant moves in, whether that's the Dave's Hot Chicken responsibility or the landlord's responsibility, that's a detail. But at least it's not a permanent change to the painting of the structure. And so my recommendation number three will be that we grant them the waiver to put the murals in accordance with the conditions and below on the EIFs parts of the structure on the sides as depicted in the drawing. Not where that window is, where that drawing never got fixed.
Yes, I can't edit that out.
The upper portions.
Not the bottom right window, just strictly on the ephesus.
So number three will be a recommendation to grant to it. So at the end of the day, we've accommodated for this applicant on just about everything they've asked, including a larger sign, which at one point we did ask you to look at a smaller sign, was within code, but felt that it was appropriate to give you that waiver for a larger sign as listed in number one, except for the red awnings anywhere on the building.
Sure.
And I'm going to reiterate what I've said in the past, that this kind of facade treatment is something we were trying very specifically to avoid, that we don't want a miasma of different competing color schemes like that. We could have this scenario on this side of the building, but one of the neighbors might decide they want, I don't know, bright purple and fuse or something, somebody might want lime green and whatever. And the result would be like a carnival of colors, very garish, and I can't support that.
I don't mind it.
The awning?
No, I understand the awning consistency because it creates the visual continuation of the buildings. But actually, I think that the idea of keeping the artwork above the brick for long-term planning is fine.
I'm less in favor of painting brick. I'm more in favor of painting an awning that's already painted.
Right, and, yeah, and so, okay, we're clear, there's no painting on this application of any brick surfaces.
Correct.
So that upper effus is not?
That's all, they're all... Yeah, yeah, it's EIFs.
It's regulated to the stucco. So there's, just so everyone knows, there's a slight typo here. Ephesus is actually EIFs, it's acronym for. It's basically just a stucco. There's two color stuccos on the building, there's a very light cream and a, we'll call it a tan. They are keeping the mural just to the tan section below the cornice and above the band course, which is where the decorative CMU block or larger bricks end.
Thank you for clarifying.
So again, reversibility would be very easy for another tenant to come in, a couple days to paint, could be reversed very quickly. So, and just as we've spoken before, I'm also in support of the graphics. I think that the visibility that you're going to have on two of the sides of the building, not only from Balltown Road, but from, you know, both north and south directions and in the parking lot, are going to be pretty favorable to this applicant. Plus, I would also add that at night, when the inside is lit up, I know that the insides of the Dave's Hot Chickens are very, very colorful, you're probably going to see that through the windows as well.
So I'm going to leave the windows kind of blank, because you can kind of see the artistic freedom they have on the inside. But yes, the inside will be pretty detailed.
Yeah, there's going to be quite a bit of color.
Sure.
Inside and outside of the building.
Yes.
If passed. Okay.
Is most of the business done at night?
They get a pretty good lunch crowd. Obviously not quite sure the statistics on Niskiuna quite yet, but they do have a really heavy lunch presence and also at night and late night food, especially with like DoorDash and delivery and stuff like that. They're pretty busy. They're starting to pop up all over the East Coast, which is really nice.
Yeah, I would, I think our chairman said it very well, you know, with regards to the alternate use or practices of color in areas that we don't regulate to complement the requests that we are not seeming to, you know, approve with the awnings. You know, I sometimes do wonder if the awnings will ever become a dated thing, and it just makes our plaza look old. But we're not dealing with that now, and the consistency is clearly in the code. And at night, you probably won't see the color anyhow. So I would probably kind of go in the favor of keeping consistent with our plaza awning color as it is.
Right, and Ms. Laflamme, to your point, right? If the landlord ever came and said he wants to change the awning colors on all of the buildings, right? That's something that we can entertain, but if we're going to do a hodgepodge of awning colors, I think that's a different story.
I agree. Okay, any other comments or discussion? So I think the takeaways from this is that waiver one and waiver three remain unchanged. We'll be voting on the whole thing, but it looks, appears that we're going to be modifying number two. So I'll ask for a motion by Mr. Khan.
A motion to modify waiver number two?
That would eliminate the red awnings and keep them the existing color.
Okay.
All right. I will sit.
Are you deleting number two and replacing it with number three?
Yeah, so I think that we would actually remove the whereas that guides that waiver request, so remove the paragraph for the awnings, which is that's, I'm not exactly sure which whereas is. So we would remove whereas section 220-48.22D1 states guideline exterior building materials all the way down to where it says that a waiver for the bright red awnings is required. So remove that paragraph, then remove number two, and then number three would become number two. And then also, I think you can remove the condition that the awnings on the west and east side will remain the green color because it's kind of irrelevant, yeah. And also when you're doing that, so I just copied the word effus from her, and I didn't know, I actually Googled it to try and find if I, but I couldn't find it on Google, so I was like, okay. But yeah, so could we, we'll also add to that amendment the typo?
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. So the amendment as stated by Ms. Robertson is proposed by Mr. Khan. I will second. We're going to vote on this. Ms. Bergami?
So let's just summarize it again. I know you did it with referencing Laura, but let's just be clear. We're going to remove whereas, the paragraph whereas section 220-48.22.
Yep.
We are going to remove under the resolved statements, item number two, the waiver for bright red awnings, and we're going to remove condition number three because the understanding explicitly is that the awnings will not be changed with this application.
And we'll fix the spelling.
And we'll fix the spelling of, we will spell out the acronym, EIFs, for that type of structure. I know that I have installation, I don't know what the rest is.
Ephus, stuck, stamped for exterior insulation finish system.
Yep.
Just so you know.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, that was Mr. Levy speaking as the landlord.
All right. So we have on the table here a proposal to modify the number two, and we will ask Ms. Bergami to now call the roll.
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strain.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Belofsky.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Abstain.
Chairman Darpino.
Wait, go ahead.
Yeah, you have to vote no.
All right.
Look, this is a new rule, though. I've abstained on other similar issues.
But your point, Bob, can you just address that?
Yeah, so abstention would be in a situation where you have arguably a conflict of interest or some reason why you can't vote on it. If your point is that you don't want to vote yes, then you would vote no unless you have to opt out for some other reason.
I will note, your predecessors did not agree with that interpretation, but I will go with a no vote then.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Darpino.
Aye. So the resolution is modified six to one. Okay. And if there's no further discussion, can you please call the roll for the amended resolution 2025-09?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Ms. Strain.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Ms. Belofsky.
Aye.
Ms. Gomes.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
No.
Chairman Darpino.
Aye, and the resolution is passed six to one. Okay, thank you.
Great.
We hope that you can relay this back to Mr. Trager, and looking forward to having you as a tenant in Town Niskiuna.
Same, fingers crossed. Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, that finishes new business, there's no further resolutions. We'll move down to discussion items. First up is 432 Balltown Road, Mohawk Commons, site plan application for a tenant change to Oren Wine &amp; Spirits. Project lead is Ms. Gold.
Yes, and this is the space between Burlington and, ah, I forgot the name of the other business. It is...
It's the shoe store.
I think the applicant is here. Come on up.
We have a representation of the requested sign.
And is there anything you want to present?
No, I think we have submitted pretty much the documentation we had through the emails.
Okay, well, then I'm going to address the change of tenant issue first.
Okay.
It's allowed use, and in fact, for many years back when it was Mohawk Mall, this part of that area actually had a liquor store called Molik, which was an abbreviation of Mohawk Liquors. It was there for probably around 10 years, sold wine, alcohol, liquor, and lottery tickets. It's totally consistent with the zoning, and I know a nearby business is upset, well, the owners are upset, but it is consistent with the zoning. We are not responsible in any manner, shape, or form for the granting or denial of liquor licenses. So that issue is settled, and I don't see any issue with the change of tenant.
Okay.
Does anybody else? Okay, the other part of it is they need a waiver for the sign. It's a little bit more than the 50-foot limit. Not by much. They need a... They need a waiver 42.7 square feet, which, since the gross limit is supposed to be 50 square feet, no matter how big the storefront is, and Burlington is way over that. I had sent pictures of both the buildings on either side, but they didn't make it into the packet. That might be helpful, but this line is actually going to look very small. So I think we should grant the waiver as well.
So the only technical question I had on that is that when a space is subdivided and you have a large facade like that, does that just land at the demarcation line of the footprint of the building, not the actual full facade?
Sorry, David, I don't understand.
Do you follow the question? So if you're looking at that, at that front elevation.
Yep.
Burlington actually owns part of that, or has part of their footprint of their store, that they're not doing anything with that, that signed facade. Was that calculated into Burlington's overall sign?
It is, but Burlington has much more than 50 linear feet. And once you go over 50 linear feet, you don't get any more credit.
Okay.
So...
That's the threshold?
Right, yeah. And this one's like 30, I think. So they would technically be limited to 30, but the facade is much bigger.
I just couldn't think of a previous project where we had a full facade that had a sectional tenant that had to share basically a blank facade with nothing.
Yeah, maybe in Mansion Square, I might be able to pull that up. I'd have to look.
Because usually each bay represents each storefront and then...
Yeah, Leslie and I, we were actually talking about that.
Okay.
We actually considered seeing if mall management would let it go larger, and onto the Burlington space, Burlington space. And I know that sometimes stores reconfigure or leave, and I don't know that mall management would want to make this available, nor did I want to presume that the business owner would actually want to risk having to put a different sign up at some point.
Okay.
Okay.
So there's the Burlington sign, and it's huge. Oops, oops.
Right, it's not the other one.
And there's Famous.
Right.
And while that doesn't fill its whole facade area, it was still, I believe, a waiver on that one as well.
Yes, both Burlington and Famous did get waivers.
So the requested waiver isn't that big. It's totally consistent with other signage, and if anything, it's going to look smaller.
That's what I was going to ask you. Do you think between those two huge signs, it will still do its job at that size? Or will it get lost?
I think it will because of the orange, orange. That is eye-catching.
Thank you.
It is internally lit, so it will glow, yeah.
And all the lighting, well, the chaussons outside stay, and the lighting under the eaves or whatever we call it, stays, so there's light down on the sidewalk area. And I bet I could see that driving by the mall, or the commons, as we call it, whatever.
Yeah, it's more a question of precedent, which is if Burlington let go of that secondary space and a different tenant went in, could you be in a position where you had like really lopsided signage? Right, because it's almost like a one-third, two-thirds split on that arch, correct?
Well, it depends on how it's subdivided. If it goes back to the original footprint, then that would, it would be the facade that they would deal with less, that section of where that portion is.
Yeah, I mean, it's almost half. It's not, because the change is right where those window colors are, if you get, so it's, I mean, it's almost half. So, and they're fully centered in their half. I don't think that it would negatively impact if they did a demise in the future. I think it looks strange to have it on the one side. But yeah, to Leslie's point, then if something ever changed and they did demise the orange wine and spirits, if it's lasting for, you know, 30 years, hopefully, it'll still be fine.
Well, and the other possibility is that something could change in the Burlington space. Some stores are going smaller, they're carrying less merchandise. So they may find they don't want it sometime down the road, and if the sign is on both sides and this space in between winds up leased to somebody else, there's a problem. And if the sign is on both sides and this space in between winds up leased to somebody else, there's a problem.
Just for the record, I know several of us from the board and myself, we usually just for the record, I know several of us from the board and myself, we usually ask for seeing what a size compliant sign looks like. But I think for the arguments that are being made relative to the two signs neighboring and also the way your building is structured, I'm not going to request to see a a size compliant sign.
I think this one is size compliant.
Is it? I thought it does need the waiver.
Oh, no, you're right. Yep, this one isn't.
Yep.
Never mind.
I just wanted to make that statement for the record.
Chairman, Mr. Levy does have his hand raised.
Okay, Mr. Levy?
Just as a point, the prior tenant, Carter's, and the tenant before them pay less, both had a similar sign layout
Yes.
into that, you know, demise space. So this isn't this isn't a space that's been, you know, changed or modified recently. This was a similar use for the past two tenants prior to Orange Liquor, who had similar signs and similar designs.
Okay, thank you.
Now, there's three height options it seems you put for the sign. So where actually is it going to go?
The 24-inch, um, if you pull up this, I think it's 24-inch both each line, the height wise. And the the if you pull, I think that's the right one.
So there's three of them. So is this the one?
That's the one, the one, um, I think. Can you zoom in?
Yeah, so these two came, I think, previously. But the most recent one we have, the sign is higher.
Yeah.
And and the overall, okay, so the the sign that's higher is the most recent and the overall length is 192 inches, correct?
It changed, yes.
Just as a clarification.
Okay.
Looks like we also went from singular spirit to plural spirits on this most recent one, too.
Yep.
Yeah, but this is the most recent document. So this is the one you're asking for, right?
Yes.
Yeah. The older ones, the the numbers were changing.
Okay.
And the style.
The style also changed.
Different.
Yeah, it did.
And I think this would actually work much better.
Thank you.
Okay. There was also a drawing in the packet that showed a couple upgrades to the parking lot area.
Yes.
Crosswalk and some attention to the planning beds and some demarcated, looks like customer pickup areas. Right there. The signs that would be at those at the areas indicated in red would just be small placard signs, correct?
Uh, which one?
That one.
Yes. I think, yeah, this is going into the those parks, I believe.
Okay.
Yes.
In the right area?
Yes.
All right.
And I assume the building department will approve all locations.
All the final locations.
All the final locations, just to ensure they meet, you know, parking lot code. But then it's got refurbishing of the landscaping beds and a large crosswalk.
Yes. So the refurbishing of the of the beds there, the applicant will initiate them, but the landlord maintains them?
Yeah. I mean, I think sometimes the landlord does them, too. Depends on what they work out amongst themselves.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion items? All right. I think we're at a point where we can call for resolutions to the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gold, do you feel that way?
I was going to ask for that.
Perfect, okay. All right, so it looks like the package is pretty complete. If there's any last minute items you want to add or get into that doesn't change anything, please make sure that you reach out to the planning department. But I think for what we see right here, if you're happy with this and the feedback that you've gotten tonight, then we'll move forward with this with this information.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is 2757 Aqueduct Road, Niskuna Harbor, an application for sketch plan approval for a planned unit development. Ms. Strang and Ms. Laflamme are the project leads and we have representatives from the applicant here.
Good evening, Brett Steenberg, Steenberg Consulting Engineering here on behalf of the applicant, Niskuna Harbor LLC. The last time we were here, we were seeking a motion to the town board to accept the application for PUD. The town board did accept that application and we subsequently filed for sketch PUD, starting the process of sketch, preliminary and final PUD approvals, recognizing that this board, you know, at the last meeting had some concerns about some things, recreation areas, density, things like that. We did we didn't get into the recreation areas at this time. We will get into that and and start detailing those locations on the plan, but wanted to get, you know, moving forward with the sketch plan application. We did add the density calculation to the plan and added the isolated wetlands, as Ms. Robertson had requested to the plan as well, that were deemed isolated by the Army Corps of Engineers on the left side of the the site there. They did walk that site. I think I explained that at the last meeting. They did walk the site with us back, I believe, in October of this year to review those wetland boundaries, just to verify that that they were indeed isolated and they did concur that those areas are isolated as our wetland biologist had anticipated. Since that time, obviously, our wetland biologist has been busy digging into the New York State D E C wetland regulations. We are filing for a determination. He has determined that this parcel does not meet any of the 11 criteria that are set forth to classify the wetlands as unique importance, which would put them under New York State D E C's jurisdiction. He did that based upon, you know, his experience, site walk, the census mapping, which determines, you know, whether it's an urban wetland or not, based upon, I forget what year census, but this property is outside of that for listing for urban areas and has sent sent that into New York State D E C for their concurrence. We believe wholly that he is correct on this. He is actually, I think, he's he's actually gotten feedback from a couple other projects in which he's been involved in, which have been, you know, similar response that yet, yes, go ahead, move forward. We concur with your evaluation, which is the way their process is set up, very similar when you when you go through their through their webinars and such, their process, they're adopting more of a similar process to what the Army Corps of Engineers adopted, which is relying somewhat on project consultants to review the wetlands, get back to them, walk if they feel necessary or accept the boundaries as such. So we feel confident that we can move forward with with this PUD as we've got, you know, sketched laid out at this point and would like this board to assist us in moving forward. We, I I know there have been a lot of concerns about density. One of the things that we are trying to do with this project, and Chuck can speak to this a little bit, little bit more, since he he delves into the marketing aspect of it a little more than I do. We are trying to hit a a price point and a market point that really isn't in the town of Niskuna right now. Niskuna, as you are all aware, is a great community to live in, but a very expensive community to live in and to buy into. We want to be able to at least have a product that first time home buyers can look at and say, you know what? I can get a mortgage for this. I can make make these monthly payments because I want to live in the town of Niskuna. I want to have the availability to the city of Schenectady, to the bike path, to, you know, we're 30 minutes from three major metropolitan areas. We want to be able to do that. We also really want to be able to have that product that a someone who is a snowbird or downsizing in the town of Niskuna wants to remain in the the town that they've lived in for the last 30, 40, 50 years can be able to downsize to something that they're not paying rent on, that they can actually say they own. That's why we are proceeding with with this condo design, which there are not a lot of in the town of Niskuna. Other communities where we've done this similar, especially the fourplex condominiums, which is the majority of the buildings, other communities where we've done that, we've seen a lot of senior snowbirds moving into those those units. Colony, Rotterdam, I've done probably almost 250 of them now. And it is a lot of seniors mixed in with with young business professionals. I think the larger units, larger buildings might be a little more attractive to the young business professionals, whereas those fourplexes, the the seniors seem to really love and have based on on my experience with these types of projects. So when we start looking at density in order to be able to try to offer a product at that at those price points, obviously, the more we scale back on density, the higher the the cost is going to increase. And that's something that that the applicant is very, you know, very attuned to to trying to to meet that that price point. Again, I did put the the zoning calculator, the density calculation on the plan. There is no definitive methodology in the town's code to develop that density calculation. So we put something together. I feel that it is, if nothing but conservative, only on the fact that looking at the latest planned unit development to be approved, which was Rivers Lodge immediately adjacent to this, was approved for 260 units on 10 less acres with only one less acre of wetland on the site. So I think, you know, we're requesting 200 units on the site with 10 additional acres and, you know, that that's where we're at right now with the density. And obviously, as far as we move through the site planning process, you know, we'd like to, you know, this input from this board and hear what you have to say. With me this evening is Chuck Bafundi, who is a consultant for the developer. Do you want to add anything to?
No, I think Brett said it well. Thank you.
Well, I I would want to start by congratulating you on the town board's result and the resolution that they wrote. Great overview. You know, as I look back at at the specifics, you know, number 1A, whereas is the affordable owner occupied, clearly articulated with the goal and the intent of the diversity in the product, you know, and providing additional homing, home options, you know, in Niskuna. You had brought up a couple times, and maybe you can give some of the board feedback on what you heard from the town board. Was there a density concern?
I think the density concern resided more with this board than the town board.
The number of units, 200, based on the 30% more than what it would be.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, okay, I just don't remember there being one. I do think it's a good math equation. I do think there's a good example next door. The more the more there are, the more affordable they can be, you know, so I just hope that that really does come to be a price point target kept. You know, that's my, that's my biggest concern, even though we all know that the market takes off after they're built and however, how it starts out leaves a long impression, you know, so that's one thing I really am happy to see your message could, you know, certainly coincide with with that. And then we want to hear more about the recreational space, you know.
Absolutely, and we're working on developing that as well.
Forty forty-six percent green space? I mean, that's wonderful.
That's a it's a substantial green space. And it's and I've explained this before. It's actually, if you if you get out there and walk the site, it's beautiful green space. There's it's rolling, undulating. I mean, you've got obviously got the the river on the north side and, you know, between us, which we don't own, but you could see that that division, you've got the old Barge Canal, which is actually very defined, still there. It's it's and with the pond, I think we can work together with this board to come up with something that would be, you know, spectacular passive recreational space. I don't want to get too much into developing hardscapes, you know, tennis courts and basketball courts and things like that, only because I think the 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 natural aspect of the property lends itself to, you know, incredible passive recreational facilities for the site.
I did. Excuse me, I I realize that you're still developing the recreational portion. But again, I think it's I would remiss if I didn't mention that there's always the possibility of children being in here. And so whereas I know you want to keep it on a professional, older people recreation mindset, we're still going to need, I think, some type of younger folks.
Absolutely, and, you know, I think I mean, this is kind of just my own personal feeling and and my son, actually, who's 22 years old and and now part of my business, shares this sentiment. We grew up and he grew up on the Lysheville Nature Preserve. And his feeling is that, you know, what he experienced with having that natural environment and what I'd like to do is try to develop something from a natural aspect and and talking with various, I don't know who to talk with yet at this point, but something that would be more focused on younger children, being able to enjoy and get introduced into nature and get away from the computers. Obviously, you know, some smaller, you know, playground, things like that and stuff that kids love and there's plenty of it around town and, you know, obviously, having it right there on site would be great, too. But also having that that natural aspect that's focused on targeted younger age groups so they can, you know, start to become engulfed in that, you know, hey, let's get outside, let's go for a walk in the woods, let's go catch frogs and tadpoles and pollywogs or, you know, it's it's a, it's something that I've always felt dear to because I I grew up that way. I really wanted, when I when I purchased my property, that my my wife was pregnant with our son and that was one of the main reasons I purchased the property. I I grew up near a stream. I always wanted to be on the stream. For him to grow up on the stream, he still talks about the days of going down there and just tromping through the stream, catching crayfish and minnows and everything. So I I think, you know, I think I I would like to, in some case, in some ways, try to focus that towards something that could be educational and environmental for children as well.
And I agree with that. Excuse me, but also, let's make sure that we do have some of the small.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Can you forgive me if it's in here? I looked for it, but I think Nancy makes a very good point that we will have families. Is there a mix of bedroom configurations or are they all standard?
We we haven't gotten to that point yet on the unit designs, but I would imagine we'll have a diversity in unit types mixed out throughout the development, especially between the four-unit buildings and the 10-unit buildings.
What, forgive me, I'm new, fairly new to the board. So in the other ones you've developed, is it 1 to 3, 2? What is it typically? Where do tip?
Most of the condominiums that I've developed are 1 to 2. And actually, I'm finding now a lot of actually, single-family homes are coming in with two bedrooms, two bedrooms and a den because that's what people can afford and that's where where the price point is. I don't know, maybe we'll see some three bedrooms once we get into the to the design and the development of it. But we'll certainly be be taking a look at that and get back to you with that information.
What is the, well, let me start by saying, I get that the D E C is sort of a wild card, especially in light of how new the wetland regs are, but do you have any sense for what the timeframe is for them to look at your expert analysis and either bless it or not?
Yeah, so working on a number of different projects, hard question to answer right now, Mr. S. I mean, it's it's the response times, right? I, well, where we feel confident right now is the the package that we have and the due diligence that we did within the package. So we're confident, I think, with our wetland biologist that we have a solid submission. Response times, though, are absolute wild card. Couldn't answer that.
Okay, so part of the reason that I'm asking is I'm sensitive to the fact that based on sort of the minimum amount that these people are paid to do this job, it's essentially a volunteer job. So while we're not trying to put the brakes on your project, the wetlands delineation is the key variable that we need in answer to. It affects your density, it affects your layout. So like, I'm good with the discussion that we're having about what's important to this board and what they'd like to see in it, but we can't do a ton until we know what that wetland variable is going to be.
Yeah, and and we're just as sensitive to it. We're spending money, right? We're looking at Brett, trying to do some level of design until we know we get a response out of them, right? So we'll we'll be mindful of that as well. So we'll, we'll be mindful of that as well. There's, with this property, there's multiple fronts to it in a sense of trying to tackle some different things, right? The wetlands, having the milestone met with Army Corps was a huge milestone. Investigating the DEC wetlands was the next precessing task with the regulatory environment. I think we're in good standing there. And then aside from that is also the crossing conversation. So understand, things can change with DEC, but we at least wanted to kind of get some reaction out of the board. And maybe if we focus on anything is, you know, internal to the layout, there may be some changes. But if we can ask to focus on anything right now, it'd be the crossings, both of the bike trail and the location that was down by the National Grid power lines that connects to Rivers Ledge. Richard DeSaro, at the time, had negotiated with the Louisiana Development Team to make a connection into that development next door. If we can, if there's something that we can work on right now while we wait for DEC, it would be kind of materializing those crossing agreements with Parks and Rec and National Grid. We have, you know, information with rights to those crossings with National Grid through our title research. And we've already had a kickoff call with the planning department with Parks and Rec, pretty much following the same criteria that was done on Rivers Ledge to cross those. But I agree with you. We, we understand the DEC stuff is, you know, sensitive to the rest of the layout. But if we can focus on two things that I don't think are as sensitive to the DEC conversation, it'd be the crossings.
I don't know how many of you are on the board for Rivers Ledge. So the issue with the crossings is that the state won't give a private easement to Crossover. So they actually, I think, leased it to us and we subleased it to Rivers Ledge. So that's why the location of it, dealing with the state is difficult and you need to have as much information as you can. So I get that the applicants ask, at least as it relates to that, I think makes sense. You know, I don't, I don't know if we can configure the rest of it without the wetland information. And I don't know if this board likes the design in general, but the idea of trying to pursue that sooner rather than later, that's probably as difficult as getting the DEC to pass on the wetlands is getting the easements in place.
Good advice. I mean, we can look at those crossings, we're only looking at one, right? One's pre-existing, which is a favorable design element, which was well thought out. And there was a lot of consideration for buying a site and minimizing any potential accidents. And is it far enough away? So I guess we can be, you know, looking at that. Would there be a lot of earth changing, elevation changing on the crossing?
No, actually, that's one of the reasons the design is the way it is, is I wanted to get that to an accurate crossing, so you didn't have that situation. I believe the westerly access at Rivers Ledge actually had to make some vertical alignment changes to the, to the path. We didn't want to do that, we want to make that at an accurate crossing. So in order to do that, obviously, we needed, it is a pretty good steep drop off off that site. We needed to be able to come down and taper grade. And we did do, you know, some sketch grading plans for this concept and identified that as the best location to make that crossing, where we could get it accurate and not have too steep a grades on the incoming roadway.
Yes, we can, we can look at that. Just a rough shot, knowing the challenge with DEC and the final wetlands, what was your anticipated completion date? Like, is this, what year are we looking at? If everything worked out?
For completion of the project or for completion of planning approval?
Both, like.
Okay, I, I think, you know, I think the applicant is probably seeking, I would think the end of the 25-year to at least year 2025 for looking at planning and getting the PUD in place. And then, you know, as far as construction, you know, you probably have at least a five-year build out on something like this. So you're probably looking at 2030 for full completion. Unless the market is, I mean, I say that only because that's what I'm seeing on some of the single-family residential projects of this magnitude that I've been working on. But I have also seen where these, I've got a project with 124 condominiums of similar style. They're looking at a three-year build out. So, you know, it's, it's.
Helps us to understand at least the timeframe.
Understood.
When we're looking to see those approvals for the wetlands. I have one more question about the planning board. I didn't get to Chan, I didn't, not the planning board, the town board meeting. I didn't get a chance to attend or, or to watch the video. But did, was there any discussion around the PUD having commercial? Was that it?
That wasn't discussed at all.
Okay, so it wasn't a request or even an interest?
And it isn't a requirement in the code for a PUD. It can be, a PUD can have commercial. A planned development district has to have commercial, but a PUD does not, but can have it if requested.
I was just curious about that.
Do you have a, a waiting list as far as renters are concerned? Or are you just, are you putting owners? Okay, I'm sorry. Or are you, are you building as you sell or are you putting them up and then?
I, you want me to, I would anticipate it be phased. Obviously, the first phase being a long aqueduct road, easiest to get to, the least amount of infrastructure. At that point, I would imagine, you know, probably sections being phased off, and it would be entirely market-driven based on, on sales. Again, if we can hit the price point we want to hit, knowing this product and knowing how they've sold in other communities that I'm going to say are, you know, people, people want to be in Niskiuna. I think these are going to sell very quickly.
Thank you.
I just wanted to touch on, I think, a clarification on the density, which I believe the Architecture Review Board had taken an initial look at this as well. So if you were to take, not to compare the two projects adjacent to it, but if you were to take the same drawing of Rivers Ledge, you know, cut it off and tape it together where the road connects, right? If you look at Rivers Ledge, you can see how the buildings were spaced out and they utilized the topography that was there. But there's always a good vantage point from each one of those units that's always looking out towards something. And here you have probably just over half of the units that are always looking out to something. You've got a handful of them that are kind of clustered together in the middle. And I think that's where some of the feedback on the density is, that those ones that are buried in the middle on the left-hand side and the one kind of tucked in there, it's almost like it's filling the space as to wherever they could be. I, I think from just a marketability standpoint, if you're looking at which units would sell first, obviously, the ones facing the river may charge a little bit more. The ones on the other side of, you know, near Aqueduct Road, you know, are looking out to, you know, woods on one side and a lot of landscaping, you see the pond from the other side. So there's attributes to a lot of those, you know. Some of them have a really good vantage point of the wetlands, they'd be looking out at nature all the time. But you've got a handful of them that are just kind of, you know, almost like filling the space. And I think that's where some of the feedback was coming about where the density was of, of, you know, everything is just kind of justified to that one area to the, to the west.
Well, and the other issue is that, that the calculations for the recreational space, like, we don't allow wetlands to go into those calculations. So, and that's been true of all of our developments. So I don't think that we've fully flushed out if these are the correct calculations or not. But the application was okay, so, but I think there just had to be a lot of clarification that that may not be the final total. Like, we have to go through those density calculations and really figure them out.
And I'm going to piggyback on those two discussions because part of it for me is that this just looks more dense in Rivers Ledge. Maybe if I had that kind of view of Rivers Ledge as it is built, it wouldn't seem that might, that way, but I'm not sure on that. But it looks like they're really close together. And I worry that it won't be the same kind of experience. And part of it is the view issue.
Correct.
But part of it, just as they seem to be pretty packed together on the left side, as it were.
As you folks know, in somewhat, you know, what's the right word? I was involved in some way with the project next door, right? And I think that it goes back to what the demographics are and the end users with like a middle-class for purchase value that we're trying to do here. I mean, Rivers Ledge was, as Dave said, very spread out, 10-unit buildings. And when you spread out buildings like that, you drive up absorbing infrastructure cost. And I think with the folks that we're trying to serve in these, in this development with condos, fourplexes, as Brett had explained, is a product that alludes to those type of people. And also, infrastructure and clustering to one side is the same thing with cluster subdivision, right? It's trying to drive down the infrastructure cost and preserve landscape and green space in another area.
Just to add to that, it, as much as I visually, I understand the concern when you look at it, right? But if the intent is to provide affordable, you know, a sustainable, affordable option, those actually kind of protect a lower price point, right? It's less desirable than the others. The price of those units in the middle will not go for the same as the one on the edge. It's a design that lends itself to keeping the prices more diverse, potentially.
And, and.
I think.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Is what I'm, how I'm seeing it, at least in my mind, when I look at it, I look at it as positive.
I also see it, is all units need to be livable and attractive? Are they going to sit there?
Well, no, I think that no matter what, if someone has the opportunity to buy a condo for $200,000, but the outside one that's $300,000 would be great, but they can't afford it. That's how that's going to play.
Right.
You know, a function of it is the number of building units or a number of residential units per building. I mean, when you start laying out 10-unit buildings, which you see along the periphery of the property, you have a lot less buildings and a lot little less little gray footprints showing on that plan. It looks perceivably a lot less dense. When, in fact, from a, from a population standpoint, it's not. And, but from a neighborhood standpoint, which is what we're trying to create here, rather than a site plan of a development, which is what I would describe more as the apartments next door, you've got, you have smaller units, smaller buildings. I think, you know, these, these buildings aren't that much larger than a, the footprint themselves than a large, single-family house in the town of Niskiuna. The actual footprint of these fourplex units are not that much larger than, say, some of these houses that you see going in Addison Woods, which I think if you overlaid that, maybe a little less dense than this, but not that much less dense than this. And that's what we're trying to create is a, is a community rather than a site. And something that, as Mr. Lefaleem said, that people can afford to move into and afford to live at and not be paying $1,500, $2,000 a month rent for an apartment where they have a view of the river that they get to see for two hours a day because they have to work the rest of the time. We're looking for something that, that people want to reside in and people have.
Well, I think you're hitting on one of my concerns. I don't want it, if these are going to be for sale units rather than permanent rentals, you know, basically apartments, I want it to look like that, like it's more than a bunch of apartments.
And that, that's, that's what we're creating. And that, that's what these condos do create is a for sale, you've got your own garage. It has the facade, the look, actually, what they look like, actually, probably more so than anything, probably the closest thing in the town that I can say they look like. A little bit larger than the, than the units, but Hummingbird Manor. Those are duplexes, large duplexes, but you've got a garage on either side and then the units. Except this has a unit on the first floor and a unit on the second floor. And that's what we're trying to create here, but with just a little bit more density to accommodate that, those price points.
And we're not at the stage yet. But my other concern with the density is how much traffic it's going to generate. I know everybody thinks the roundabout is wonderful, it's greatly improved speeds. My experience is it has also increased the risk of accident. And I've seen, not so much I've seen them as they happen, I've come across them after they just happened. And I will tell you, I have seen a number where I don't think the police were ever involved. They, because I see them looking at, well, I got this damage, you, and I got this, and yeah.
Any good traffic engineer will tell you that a roundabout decreases the risk of personal injury, but you might increase the risk of minor fender benders.
Well, and in England, they found out that it did increase the risk to pedestrians.
Yes.
And bicyclists, especially young ones.
Yes.
Which is why they started taking them all out. And they've taken a great many out.
Yes, understood. And that, that'll be part of it. And, and I will say that these units generate less traffic than single-family homes just because of the demographic that we found. And we can, I don't know who we'll be using for a traffic consultant at this point, but I know if we use the one that I'm anticipating, they've done most of the condominium developments and have a good grasp of what the actual impacts are from this type of development.
And one of my concerns with traffic analyses is that they usually focus strictly on volume and not on the other factors. And the quality of the traffic and the accident rates and all, to me, are as important, if not more so.
Understood.
But we're not, we're not to that point yet.
But that's something we will definitely look at and address for you.
You know, I want a safe, livable area, real simple.
Yeah, understood.
And, and I'm going to really hammer on the density aspect here. So in analogy, I'll give you like the three that are in the center line, all the way justified to the left. Even in Old Niskiuna, houses aren't clustered that closely together. I can't think of one house that's got seven houses surrounding it without any type of backyard setting, even the ones that are on some smaller streets.
Grand Boulevard.
Well, Grand Boulevard is, I agree, but not that close. I mean, this, even the center ones have larger, deeper backyards. You know, those units are very, very close to each other.
I can't tell from that as well as you can.
Yeah, I mean, I could, I've already scaled off of it. So it's, you know, it's the idea of having a little bit of outside space on the nice days. You know, once you add the patio furniture and stuff, you're literally having dinner with the people next door to you. So, you know, I, the other thing, too, is that maybe the way to solve that is you have, currently, it looks like three building typologies. And we're always encouraging diversity in design. If there's another unit or a way to treat those differently, even if it's changing the roof lines or something like that, you know, there's, there's a lot of information in the comprehensive plan about diversity in housing stock. I think varying designs, not just changing colors, will help create more of a community and more of a neighborhood feel in these areas. And that may be a rearrangement of the puzzle pieces, you know, something like that. I think that's worth exploring.
Certainly can take a look at that.
Okay. Yeah, but I know that, again, that density issue has been brought up by more than one boarding committee.
And I assume people are going to, you know, all the US are going to be able to have pets in them. You need places for them to walk their pets.
Oh, absolutely. No, that's, that's, and again, that's part of the recreation standpoint. That'll be something that we will be looking at creating and innovating.
In the dead of winter, they want it really close to their door.
Understood. With two large dogs at home, I very much understand.
And like Laura had pointed out, like, there's going to be a lion grab for housing, but recreational space that complements it with the wetlands not being part, participating in that. I can't imagine there being the same amount of density. But I do like the idea of having some that may be less desirable by proximity and density to, again, to kind of promote a longevity and diversity of pricing. So I do like that aspect of it, but, but I, I have to count on chairman's perspective of the actual, you know, how close are you when you start to add those things? I, I see how dense it is, but I don't, I'm not capturing that just yet. We will in time. And staggering them in some way, but still having a preferred row versus other rows.
Yeah, we can look at that. As noted, we haven't dug into the architecture of the building yet, so.
Yeah.
Could be, these footprints could be subject to change later, as you have noted.
Yeah, but it's not just the architecture. I really think it'd be useful to get a couple of different ideas of where the road could go and where the buildings could go, a couple of different. Models. I mean, Clark and I both, I mean, it's long lines here, which is not something that we've seen, you know, in this development yet. And then the other thing is, CAC brought this up multiple times. I know you're not excited about crossing the former Barge Canal, but we really need to explore if there's any way to get to the river.
That would be awesome.
We could certainly look at that, I'm not, are you looking at vehicular traffic or are you looking at pedestrian traffic?
I would say look at it all, but it would be really a shame to develop a parcel like this with no access to the river. Like, in my mind, in the CAC's mind, it's kind of unacceptable. We've got to figure something out.
Okay, and, and to be honest with you, one of the reasons we left it off was because we weren't sure. How the town would react to actually accessing the river, making it, keeping it more as an extension of the park rather than actually having it accessed through here. So.
Yeah, I thought, I thought prior that there wasn't an, an ask to go to extend Aqueduct Park, you're saying you, the town would like to extend it?
Um, no, I'm talking about river access. So there was a plan, I think Brett did it, that showed a actual boat launch off of this project. Yeah, I mean, you gotta, you gotta look at some way to get people down to the river.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I second that. I was assuming that it would. We just didn't get to that point yet, but I totally second that. And is the issue crossing over that little old canal way, is that the issue or is it a?
Not as much, I mean, obviously, we're going to run into the same scenario we have with crossing the bike path. I'm almost certain about that. With, they probably will not grant us access or an easement. So that becomes, you know, we obviously would have to work with the town, but what I don't know is. Would the town have to own a continuous piece of property from Aqueduct Road to that location in order to access that?
That's a good question.
I, I don't know how that would work, and that's one of the things that, reasons we pulled back is because the state is getting so difficult on, on. Making those crossings and access. We have contacts at the Canal Corp that we can talk to. And, you know, this project has a long history of actually developing along the river that we've kind of pulled back on because. If you read all of the, you know, riverfront guidelines for, for. Throughout the state, it's, they don't want development on the river, they want that forever wild, they want that to be public space. Obviously, what we're trying to create now is a public space and then access to that public space with, you know, some sort. I don't know from a grade standpoint if we'd be able to get a, a full boat launch or at least a canoe launch or kayak launch in that location. I think would be great to have with a small parking area, maybe some picnic tables down there. It's something we can certainly take a look at and obviously, you know, incorporate into this plan if possible.
Yeah, there's a lot of regulatory restraints, if I simply put. And a boat launch is something that'd need municipal involvement alongside the private development. Done a number of waterfront developments, and unless you have an existing OGS agreement or some type of deeded access there, you're. They're not giving those away anymore.
So it might be hard, but this is an undeveloped piece of land and we only get one shot at it.
Oh, yeah.
And even if it's more difficult or it takes some creativity. We need to explore all the options to make this the best and highest use of land that we can do.
Agreed, and I just, I, I make the point that I think it would need some municipal support. So if the town is there to support it, I think it becomes more achievable. Without town support, it's not.
Right.
Is, I'm curious, with the elevation, is the east or west like more favorable to a boat launch?
I think the west side is more favorable to the boat launch from a, the, the, down on the east side by the. And it's actually the more attractive section because you have the power lines that cross on the, the east side.
Yep.
And that's a significant grade down to the, if you, if you walk that.
I remember that.
You, you're gonna, you're gonna go downhill pretty quickly. I think on the west side, it might be a little more gradual to get down to the river, but it's obviously something we'd have to evaluate. You also don't have as many wetlands on that west side. You can see the wetlands terminate in that location, so we could certainly, you know, makes it a little easier to get across the, the old Barge Canal without having additional impacts.
Is, I'm just going to ask the question, that the former tow path is all part of the canal, right? It's, it's all part of the.
It's actually, a lot of it's on private property. Well, there, there, there's a portion of it, actually, I, I incorrectly say that. The majority of it is on the, the canal. But then there's a section that actually comes on to the, the town park property if you go a little bit further to the east. And all I can vision, and I haven't been able to find any photos or any historical guidance on it, and I've looked quite a bit. You could see this area where, and you actually see the, the line there where I've got the bold line, which is the floodplain elevation line. That actually, those wetlands, I think they actually pulled the barges in. I think there actually may have been a, a backwater in there where they pulled the barges in, possibly waiting to go over the aqueduct. I'm not sure, but you can actually see where it, it had kind of scalloped out at one point. A, a section there, which is, is kind of unique in a sense, and you can see where the, the tow path actually does wrap up around into that area.
Yeah, because like, I was, wouldn't that be a great loop within, within the development?
Absolutely.
I mean, just finish the loop and bring it back to the bike path.
It, it really, there, there's a lot of potential and we really look forward to this board's input and, you know, working forward. And, you know, I, I know this plan has been around in a very similar iteration for a long time. And the reason we're here, Mr. Hess, you, you summed it up. We're just waiting and making sure that what we put before you is achievable from a regulatory standpoint. And we thought we were there, we, we were ninety-five percent sure we were there back in October when we, we got the Army Corps finally on the site after a year of asking them. Hey, listen, we just need you to look at these areas we have identified as isolated. We just want to make sure, we think they're isolated, we want to make sure you think they're isolated too, before we move forward. Now, we've got the monkey wrench of the D C. And I, I don't anticipate it's going to take a long time to hear back from them, but I, I can't say at this point.
So I had another, I'm going to keep picking on your density. If you, Laura, if you could just zoom into any of the lower left-hand four units. So, the other thing I, I noticed was that on the internal road in between the units, you've got two parking spaces. That go up to a tree in between each of the driveways. What's the, what's the reasoning for that?
We have had other municipalities ask for overflow parking. Because each one of these, you know, you, you've got two parking spaces for each of these units, you've got a garage space plus at least one driveway space for each unit. And, you know, they said, well, if you have any visitors coming, you need overflow parking. So, eh, we, we've looked at it a couple of different ways. We've done parallel parking along areas of the street, we've done perpendicular parking along areas of the street. But we do need or feel we should have some additional overflow parking for guests. So you don't get all that parking along the street that may be as undesirable, and then the winner can't be there. So that's why we, we've identified those. Whether we need that much, I'm not a hundred percent certain, but we did notch that out just as a, as a symmetry type of thing, going through that.
I actually like the idea.
It, it's very practical, but it's more blacktop, you know, it takes away the green, you know, I. It definitely is very practical, to your point, if you go through any of these developments, which I've been, been spending a lot of time as a real estate agent with condos and townhouses. That's what they're all trying to do, is widen the, the driveway a little bit, because it's a problem. You know, they've got two people working and a kid who's going to school at, at college. So I agree, it, it does actually help as long as, but you do have other options too, like they could just be across the way, you know.
You definitely need the overflow, they're going to have people that have parties, gatherings. You are not going to want to see those cars lined up the street.
And there's also no law that it's one car per driver in the home.
That's true.
So just a reminder on the Miller Brothers proposal that we just looked at. We had them remove the overflow parking because it did not work well with the site. And it is what it is, my personal opinion, that does not work well with the site. Maybe the one parking lot at the bottom, but we need to look at more configurations of the buildings. But putting parking spots in between where you should have a lawn, maybe make the driveways bigger. That is not, that is not, you guys, like, in practice, I think that's going to look absolutely terrible.
Laura, to confirm, did you say maybe make the driveways wider?
Yeah, I mean, there's alternatives, like if you want to achieve more parking spaces.
I, I, I believe we should have that be a part of this planning, like, I agree with Laura completely. I, I think that we do need to anticipate that the number of cars on, on average, you know, are going to be higher here. There will be working families, there'll be more than one working. And if they don't have the driveway to use, they're parking on the side, they're parking on the grass. They're, they're parking, you know, overflow, is it, we have to have, we have to have that in mind, because I think in this area especially, we're going to have that challenge. So I do like where you're going with that, it just may need to be different in some way, yeah.
That's why we're here.
It's a balance and a trade-off, though, like, over parking places also creates issues, like. Sometimes there's more desirability when there's less parking. It's, it's a balance somewhere that we're going to have to look at. We may not be able to have four parking spaces for each unit because they might want them, that, you know. We don't, we, we need to get away from sizing parking lots for the Christmas traffic and our commercial areas. Like, it's a balance that we gotta really look at.
Just something that, you know. Look, as far as, you know, we've got these perpendicular spaces here. But from, more from a community standpoint. Would you foresee a, like, why, parallel, you would get quite as many parking spaces. Would you create these, you know, notched, parallel parking spaces? You see those a lot in this type of community, you know, that you could do along some of these areas where, would you prefer to see that over the perpendicular parking spaces?
You're going to have to actually ask that question in the microphone, so Trish can hear it in a minute.
The areas where we show perpendicular parking, the, the larger, you know, six, eight spaces there. Would you rather see us do a parallel parking with a, you know, make it more like an on-street parking, but on-street that's. Kind of not blocking the traffic and you still have, you know, emergency access through there, so it gives the people an area to pull off. You see that a little more often when you're creating these types of communities where, to, to kind of give it that community feel.
My experience, fewer, few, fewer people know how to parallel park and how to get out of parallel parking.
I, 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 I understand your concern. Fortunately, there's more and more cars that'll do it for you now these days, but.
I don't trust them.
I, I, I've never done it, my car does it, and I've never tried, so I don't trust it.
And there's, there's also the, the issue of snow storage. If you have those, you know, you certainly don't want this snow storage to be backing up those notched areas too, because then you defeat the purpose.
Right, that, it's, it's just something that I wanted to ask as I'm going through this design that, you know. Might be something that you may want to see or may not want to see, I don't know.
Can you just explain what the parking would be like for the ten unit?
The, the ten unit, again, each one of the units has its own garage space and its own driveway space. You could see that the driveways are on both sides of the building and in front of the buildings. So, again, just like the others, and then they would have to utilize the overflow parking as necessary. Although their driveways, because of the configuration, lend themselves to a little, little bit more availability to parking within their driveway space.
So on the ten unit, you'd have three on each end, and then two and two.
Two, yep.
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that parking question, and, and, but I, I can definitely anticipate, like, I'd love to see with street parking. We say we don't want the cars in the street, but that's where they park everywhere else in Niskiuna. It's already paved, it's temporary, it's more, I'm concerned about the two-car, three-car, three, three-car, you know, situation. So where there might be larger units, or I don't know how we would calculate it, something that solves it, whether. I'm okay with the parallel parking, you know, it doesn't matter. If it just minimizes blacktop, makes it easy for a guest to come and go, makes it easy. If it's pooled, you know, one, one family has three cars, someone else has one, but they can use the other available spots. But I just think we definitely, I like that you had them, because I do think that has to be part of the equation.
I, I absolutely agree, and I, I think, I've seen a few of these developments go in. And then they've gone in afterwards to add the parking, because the residents are complaining about the amount of on-street parking that they're getting. And, you know, they find locations to add the parking for those visitors and, you know, party times and things like that, so.
I just visited a place in Rochester, it's the same thing, it's, it's a pretty large development. And they don't have overflow parking. It's one garage, you can get one car off the street, everyone else is on the street. And if two people are trying to go the other way, it's just too tight. So, I, I think the, the pooled parking spaces scattered throughout are, are going to be fine. As long as you can kind of figure out what the headcount is and, you know, the, the ten units are pretty big. They seem to have everything kind of pushed away from them. So again, as your, as your first pass, if, as you work your way through it, see where those can be clustered in. But yeah, I'm completely not a fan of the two spaces in between each of the town halls.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just my opinion, though.
Noted.
I just want to add, so just because this community is geared towards younger professionals. What they consider is that there's the potential for those families to grow. Just because the space seems at capacity. When you're thinking about that, even in my neighborhood, you, you, you start off with two cars, and again, your kids get older, your kids get a car. And then we're looking at maybe those overflow spaces become permanent spaces because there's nowhere else to go. So maybe just considering some, giving yourself some type of comfort. And room for expansion, because those young families, we, you know, have the potential to grow. I don't, I think having Niskiuna be a prime place to be, everyone won't be retired. You'll probably get a lot of people looking to have that affordability.
Understood. Okay, great, any other initial feedback thoughts? All right.
All right, great, I.
Thanks for the update.
This is very helpful and, you know, getting your opinions out. So that as we work through this and as we get these D C determinations. We can come back with a plan, hopefully, to be able to address as many of your concerns as possible and work through it quicker than we would normally, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, that wraps up the discussion items, we move on to reports, Planning Department.
So quickly, nine twenty-nine Pierce Road, you guys denied this sketch plan application. We believe they do still have the right to go to the zoning board and appeal the decision, and they have decided to do that. So, we got their appeal in time for them to go on the April meeting. So at the next planning board meeting, you would be making a recommendation to the zoning board on the area variance for the five feet on both lots.
So they're going to come back here one more time?
Yeah.
Before they.
So I mean, you're, you were completely in your, within your rights to do a no on the sketch plan. But you do still need to do a recommendation to the zoning board on whether or not to grant that for five-foot variance. So just be ready for that one. Yeah. Two, three, three, nine Troy's Connected E Road, also on the zoning board for April. They are not going to come to the planning board for a recommendation because they have chosen to do a code interpretation appeal. So depending on the outcome of what the zoning board decides on the code interpretation. They will still need to come back to the planning board on an area variance or use variance. Essentially, they're challenging our interpretation that they need a use variance. So if the zoning board, either way, the zoning board decides, a variance will still be needed. And at that point, they would come back to you guys and then you would do a recommendation on the area or the use variance. You don't do recommendations on code interpretations. Mr. Hess is going to help us do our case to the zoning board on our code interpretation. They'll have their own lawyer and then we'll update you guys on what the ending result is of whether or not it's an area variance or a use variance. So that is on there, but it's actually not a planning issue, it's a code interpretation issue.
That's Harry's place, right?
Yep, that's Harry's. Two, six, nine, zero Balltown Road, that's GE Vernova. Had a nice sidewalk on the patio and they are working on the design details and that they'll be going to the next C A C meeting.
Yeah, if I could, if I could add to that, Ms. Belovski, Ms. Robertson and I went and got a great tour, walking tour on a really nice day up there. The, the building that they're doing there is pretty impressive. So if you look at the way that they're planning that site, how they're utilizing some of the space. Taking a nineteen-sixties building to make that link, the armature of the link that we approved has been framed up. The interior design that, that Matt explained is really progressive as far as, you know, how they're going to entertain. Clients there at breakout rooms, entertainment cafeterias, that, you know, it's, it's only going to be solely for GE. There's, there's no public use of the space, but it, it is very impressive when you look at, at what, what we've seen.
And we asked.
Can we wrap this up?
What would that look like? The patio design is very thoughtful, the. Um, the patio design is very thoughtful, the positioning of everything.
Community service thing.
Yeah. It's going to be very impressive.
Yeah, it, it, it really is a, a good application of design. For those of you who have been on the property, you were gonna see a pretty big transformation of what that site looks like. And, you know, hopefully, maybe a year from now, when everything's finished, we could have the, have the board take a walk through, you know, the position of the guard shack, they, they really thought out the way that the, the, the land use is being developed and how to do that, you know, on, on that parcel, on that campus.
And they're really excited about it. It's very fun to talk to them.
Right. You know, the, the types of plantings, they're not just gonna put in, you know, short little trees, they're looking for mature trees. Talked about the wetlands with Laura, you know, what invasive species they can, they can, you know, work on there. As, from a construction perspective, it is a very clean site. I mean, very safe, um, you know, there's a lot of activities, if you walk behind that building, there are dozens and dozens of job trailers and staging areas and things like that. You know, there's a lot of people working there, it's, it's going to be an extremely impressive, um, building when it's finished.